Mr. Chairman, this is Teresa. Staff is ready to begin.
Thank you, Teresa. I'd like to welcome everyone to the April 21st, 2001 meeting of the Town of Hilton Head Islands Planning Commission. Teresa, are we in compliance with FOIA?
Yes, sir, we are.
Thank you. Could you please call the roll?
Certainly. Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Scanlon? Mr. Alfred?
Present.
Mr. Theodore?
Here.
Mr. Christian?
Present. Thank you.
And Ms. McGowan is excused.
All right, I'd like to note and welcome Councilmember Harkins, Lennox, Tamara Becker, and David Ames to the meeting. Welcome, councilmembers. And approval of the agenda. Does staff have any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
All right, Michael. And Alan, did I see your hand go up?
You did.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, to approve. All in favor, put your hand up in the air. Put your hand up, okay. Anyone opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. We have the minutes of the April 7th, 2021 meeting. Can I have a motion on those meeting minutes?
So moved.
All right, Stephen and Levon, I saw your hand go up, second. Any discussion? Any corrections? All those in favor, put your hand up in the air again. Anyone opposed? All right, they are approved unanimously. Appearance by citizens, Teresa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Public comments concerning agenda items were to be submitted electronically via the open town hall portal. There were no comments submitted on the portal. Citizens were also provided the option to give public comment during the meeting by phone. However, there were no requests to give public comment by phone.
Well, with the exception of that phone, there were no public comments received. Okay, we're moving on to unfinished business, okay? And this is a review of the town council's changes related to family compound and family subdivision. And I understand that, Doctor, we are just being given a briefing today on this particular item, that there is no action required from the commissioners. And however, if the commissioners have a question, we're free to ask those questions, and hopefully we'll get responses to those questions. So, Doctors, the floor is yours.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Thank you. Good afternoon, this is Teresa Bowes, Historic Neighborhood Preservation Administrator for the record. Since you received your agenda packet, some things have changed concerning family compound and family subdivision applications, which I will explain momentarily. First, again, as Mr. Christian said, there is nothing for you to take action on today. I'm just bringing you up to speed. So, to recap, in early 2020, staff began drafting amendments for the proposed Historic Neighborhoods Preservation Overlay District. The Gullah Task Force recommended that the proposed HMPO district move to the LMO Committee in September of 2020. The LMO Committee made their revisions and recommended that the proposed district move forward to Planning Commission. And at the October meeting in 2020, Planning Commission made the following recommendations: The island's historic neighborhoods would encompass the proposed HMPO district, to exclude platted subdivisions within the historic neighborhoods for the proposed HMPO district, reduce buffers and setbacks, reduce access easement and right-of-way risks, increase impervious surfaces and building heights in some districts, zoning change of RM4 properties that would allow four units per acre to RM6 properties that would allow six units per acre, and include applications for family compound and family subdivision. So, it went to Public Planning Committee, and they considered the overlay district and made the recommendation that Town Council approved the family compound and family subdivision applications. So, the purpose of family compound and family subdivision is to encourage property retention among fellow property owners by easing development standards and honoring the tradition of communal living among family members. The proposed family compound is a single parcel that is owned by families defined as spouse, biological, or adopted children, and those descended from a common ancestor. And on a family compound, several homes can be built on this parcel, depending on the allowed density. Infrastructure is installed in the order of construction, and once the property is established as a family compound, a three-year restriction from selling the property to non-family members would be imposed, and this restriction would be recorded in the deed. The proposed family subdivision is actually subdivided properties owned by families, which I previously described. Homes can be built on each parcel, or the parcel can remain as it is and pass down to future generations. And unlike a regular subdivision, infrastructure can be placed as the home is built, but the plans must show where the infrastructure is going to go. So, once a property is established as a family subdivision, again, it will be recorded in the deed. And if the family subdivision is sold to a non-family member, the complete subdivision application is required. So, staff met with PPC in early 2021, and based on their input, staff researched ways to narrow the focus within the historic neighborhood, because it was a feeling that the focus was too large. So, we did this with two methods. One is by ownership, requiring that those wishing to make an application for family compound or family subdivision have property within their family since 1956, or if the property is sold to someone who has had property in their family since 1956, they could take advantage of family compound or family subdivision. The second way to narrow the focus is through the definition of family, which I previously described. And again, it's defined as spouse, parents, biological or legally adopted children, group of persons related by blood, and descended from a common ancestor, like as an extended family. Also proposed were reductions to buffers and setbacks, and access risks within family compound and family subdivision. The first meeting for family compound and family subdivision occurred at the April 6th Town Council meeting. Prior to the Town Council's second reading, it's required by state code to present the previously mentioned changes to the Planning Commission, because those amendments are different from what was presented, what Planning Commission approved in 2020. So, in working with the town attorney, staff learned that when we added the ownership requirements, as I just previously described, to the proposed family compound and family subdivision, these are considered use-specific conditions, and it needs to go into Section 4 of the LMO and add it to the principal use table. And with this addition, this requires another public hearing, and staff anticipate returning to Planning Commission in early June before proceeding to PPC and to Town Council for first and second reading. And so, I know that people are anxious to use these applications, and there is much anticipation by the community to move forward with these applications. And staff is eager to move these forward as well, but we have to be very thorough and cover all bases so that the intended results are possible. But thank you, and I can take any questions.
All right, Teresa, if you would go down the roll in discussion order, and if the commissioners have a question or comment, they can do so at that time. Teresa?
Yes, sir. Mr. Theodore?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
I have no questions, thank you, though.
Mr. Alfred?
No questions.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes, just quickly, would you just review the summary of the changes from the last time we treated this?
Yes. So, where we left off, we had the Planning Commission approved an entire overlay district, and that overlay district encompasses the neighborhoods that consist of the historic areas, the historic neighborhoods. You asked to exclude it, platted subdivisions from the proposed district, reduce the buffers and the setbacks, reduce the access easement and right-of-way risks, increase impervious surfaces and building heights in some districts, and also include a zoning change of all RM4 properties within the proposed overlay district to RM6, so that it allows six units per acre, and also includes the family compound and family subdivision. And when it was taken to PPC, it was decided that family compound and family subdivision would move forward first.
That's the piece I was looking for. Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Scanlon?
Commissioner O'Neil just asked the same question I was going to ask, so I'm taking care of that.
Mr. Perry?
No additional comments. Thank you.
Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, I don't have as much of a question as I do a comment. I made a quarterly report to Town Council on yesterday, and expressed some concern, I guess we can call it, that we're having this issue now with reviewing the family compound and family subdivision at this juncture, when we seem to be so close to really getting an important piece of this passed. As Dr. DeBoe says, we have a lot of people in the community who are anxious to see how they can use this to help them with their property, whether they're dividing it, or passing it on, or trying to do any kind of development. And I'll say for the record today, again, that I encourage staff and our attorney to work a little closer together, so that we don't get this far down the road and start noticing something that's not right. I'm all in favor of getting it right, but we've been at this for quite a while now, and I think I speak for the entire community that I'm anxious, and I certainly want to see something get passed. But I do want it to be right as well, but I don't...I'm a little frustrated, I will say, that we've gotten this far, and then we just noticed this, and not being able to anticipate something like this happening. And I hope that our legal team will pay a little closer attention to it. Dr. DeBoe and the task force have worked very hard to get to this point, so those are my comments.
Mr. Christian?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions and concern. Dr. DeBoe, this presentation that you made addresses many of the concerns that the commission raised when we first heard this, that if existing developed subdivisions would not be subject to this particular ordinance. It does drill down to family-owned property. Is there a qualifier to make a property, a family-owned property? Do they have to be native islanders? How is that determined? What's the qualifier that puts them in that category?
Yes, three things. As discussed by the first reading of Town Council, we've reviewed through those. So, first, it has to be in the historic neighborhood, and staff is planning on adding the map that shows those areas. Then, it has to be property within those areas owned since 1956, to take advantage of those two applications. And third, you have to fit in that definition of family, of, you know, spouse, children, descendant family.
So, if you own property and you're not a native islander since 1956, you would qualify?
Say again?
If you are not a native islander and owned a piece of property in the historic district since 1956, you could qualify?
Yes, it ties to property.
Okay, that was my question. Doctor, I just want to compliment you and the staff on just staying with this. And, you know, I know it's a complex issue, and we seem to be drilling it down, and we're very, very close. And just really want to, again, you know, congratulate you and the staff on your efforts, and hopefully we can bring this to fruition very, very soon. And I see Jennifer Ray has her hand up.
Yes, sir. I just want to clarify that our staff attorney and our town attorney have been involved all along the way, so I don't want to give the impression that we have not been coordinating with them, or they haven't been on this. It was right near the end when the desire was to continue to whittle down, or to, you know, if you will, take that funnel and make a smaller amount of people that could actually benefit from this, or take advantage of it. And it was, the trigger was that 1956 ownership was a way that staff proposed, trying to narrow the focus, because we can't say it's only for a native islander. That's not a criteria that we can use. Well, when we did that, that's when it kind of changed things. So, it was real late in the game that we made that change, and that's what triggered this change for our town attorney in looking at it then as a use rather than just the application. So, they have been involved, they've been doing a great job, we work very closely together, so I don't want you all to think that that's not happening. It was just this late in the game, as changes have been made, you know, because there's quite a dramatic shift from when the task force made their recommendation late last summer to now. You know, there've been a lot of changes along the way. And so, this last step is where Curtis raised the red flag. So, it's the right, and it's at the right time, you know, for him to raise that before council took action. So, we'll make this change. It won't materially affect what you're allowed to do. It'll be more procedural than anything, so what we'll bring back to you will be, in all intents and purposes, the same thing. It'll just be in a different format in the LMO, and we'll get that through and get it back to council to adopt. And hopefully, later this summer, people will be able to start taking advantage, you know, and developing their property, using their property this way.
And Jennifer, I couldn't agree with you more. You know, oftentimes, we pass these ordinances, and then we find out that there are unintended consequences, because we didn't do a thorough enough job of working it through. And we're never going to catch everything. But obviously, we need to move deliberately on this, but we need to kick over any landmines that might be in the ordinance that legal sees, or that you see as we go down this road. And again, want to compliment you, the legal team, and the good doctor, on, you know, moving it down the road. My next question is, where do we go from here? What's the next step?
So, the next step is that we'll draft those ordinances, as explained in the first reading for Town Council. There was some, adding the map back in, also just making sure that there's some other minor changes, such as the reduction of setback portion in there. We have to look at that again to make sure that it goes to, there's a footnote in there that we have to make an adjustment to, that it goes to BVA if you do any further setbacks. There were some things that were discussed at Town Council that we would need to go back through and draft. And then, the town attorney will take a look at that again, and then we have to do the legal ads for the public hearing, and we will be back before Planning Commission.
And it will come back to us, Doctor. Is that correct?
Yeah.
It will come back for a public hearing. It won't be the one where we have to put out the hundreds of signs and mail the notices, because it's a text amendment at this point to have that different use. So, it's the legal ad with the 30-day public notice before the meeting. We'll come back to Planning Commission, we'll go to PPC, and then first and second reading at Town Council. It will be cleaner than the protracted way we did it before, when you had a whole bunch, and then they whittled it down, and we were going to come back anyway. So, it'll be nice and clean and buttoned up, hopefully, to you all for your early June meeting. Because of the 30-day notice requirement, we won't be able to meet your May meeting date. So, then we can rush it through PPC and Town Council. Not rush it through, but get it expeditiously.
Thank you both. Go ahead, Michael. One question. How did we arrive at the 1956 year as being the deciding year? I mean...
That's when the bridge...I'm sorry.
No, I just wondered where that came from.
It came from, that's when the bridge was established, and that touch, that's a net that touches a lot of native islanders. So, it's when the bridge was built, in 1956.
Levon?
Yeah, I've mentioned this before, and I want to remind staff again about the resource that we have with the Gullaguchi Corridor that was established through the United States Congress. I think that's a great resource, and it may help with some definitions of people who are in the culture, and what the culture is. That, again, is an act that has been approved by the US Congress. There are some other resources out there, too, that I think would help with some definitions of exactly who is a part of the culture. We can't really say native islanders, but we are talking about the Gullaguchi culture. And that Gullaguchi corridor was established by the Congress.
Thank you for that, Levon. Any of the other commissioners have a comment before we move on to our next agenda item? Okay, Doctor, thank you so much for your hard work and the work of the other staff members. We will look forward to seeing the final rendition, that we can hopefully move on to the Town Council. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, we have on the agenda an executive session, where we need to be briefed by legal counsel on some legal issues pertaining to our next agenda item. So, I will need a motion from among the commissioners to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session.
Alan, Stephen, second. All in favor, raise your hand. Anyone opposed? All right, we are in executive session. Teresa, you work your magic, however you need to work it.
Mr. Chairman, this is Teresa. We're back up and running, if you'd like to call the meeting back to order.
Thank you, Teresa. I'd like to welcome everyone back to the April 21st meeting of the Town of Hilton Head Islands Planning Commission. The commission just came out of executive session to receive legal advice. There were no votes taken, no motions considered at that meeting. And we are in the new business, public hearing portion of our agenda, and we are going to hear a request on a zoning map amendment, ZA000744-2021, a request from E. Richardson-Lebrusse, on behalf of Seapines Country Club, to amend the official zoning map by amending the planned development mixed-use PD-1 zoning district specifically for Seapines Master Plan to change the allowed use of a property identified as parcel R550011... excuse me, 0140000508000, located at 61 Club Course Drive, from residential to golf course. The subject property would remain in the PD-1 zoning district. And at this time, I believe we have three commissioners who are going to recuse themselves from this action. It would be Mr. Alfred, Mr. Scanlon, and Mr. Theodore. Am I correct, gentlemen?
Yes.
Okay. And Missy, you are going to make the presentation?
That's correct.
All right, Missy, you're up.
Okay, my name's Missy Lewick. I'm a senior planner with the town, for the record, and I am going to get a presentation up. All right. Mr. Christian already explained the request, and the effect of the rezoning will change the use allowed on the parcel from residential to golf course use. The subject property shown here, outlined in blue, is approximately .35 acres in size, and is located on Club Course Drive, adjacent to the Seapines Country Club Golf Course Maintenance driveway. Here is an aerial showing the subject property, again, outlined in blue, to give context to the site and relationship to the club course neighborhood within Seapines. The Seapines Country Club has begun a major renovation project for the golf course practice area. The improvements plan require the relocation of a green waste storage site, currently located at the northwestern end of the driving range area, which is used by the club and the Community Services Associates, or CSA. In order to lengthen the driving range facility, the club plans on relocating the green waste storage site to the property, which is a subject of this rezoning request. And in this image from our aerial pictometry, the subject parcel is highlighted, and you can also see the current green waste storage location behind the driving range screen. The subject property is currently undeveloped. This is the view from the golf course maintenance driveway, and the property is, of course, currently a undeveloped residential lot. Here's another view of the site, showing the adjacent property located at 63 Club Course Drive. The applicant has offered to plant a vegetative screen on the subject parcel adjacent to the neighboring parcel. Here's a view looking at the site from Club Course Drive. The applicant has stated that the view from Club Course Drive will remain unchanged. Here's a view of the site adjacent, again, to Club Course Drive. As you can see, the site is currently densely vegetated, adjacent to Club Course Drive. This slide shows an excerpt from our zoning map. Currently, the property is zone PD-1, as previously stated, which is the planned development district. It is the off-white color, and the proposed rezoning would result in the parcel remaining in the PD-1 zoning district. And in this slide, the subject parcel is highlighted in blue. The applicant would like to amend the zoning of the subject property pursuant to the Seapines Master Plan. The use of the subject parcel in the Seapines Master Plan would need to be amended from residential to golf course use in order for the property to be used as a green waste storage site. And per the LMO, an amendment to the Seapines Master Plan requires a zoning map amendment, which is why we're here today. And again, the zoning for the subject parcel would remain in the PD-1 zoning district. It is staff's recommendation, which was outlined in the staff report, that all nine of the ZMA review criteria have been met with the application, and staff is recommending approval of the application with the following conditions: that a vegetative screen be planted on Lot 13, near the property line between Lot 13 and 14, and a vegetative screen be maintained and/or planted on Lot 13, near the property line between Lot 13 and Club Course Drive. These recommended conditions are concurrent with the conditions that were referenced in the letters from the CSA, as well as the owner of the adjacent property that were referenced in the application materials and provided as exhibits within their application. referenced in the application materials and provided as exhibits within their application. I do have additional slides that do go through the nine criteria and how staff felt that the application met those criteria. They are worded as they are worded in the staff report, and I'm happy to go through that if the Planning Commission wishes. Otherwise, this concludes my presentation.
What's the desire of the commissioners? You would like, Missy, to go through each one of the criteria, or are you comfortable reading, having read that information yourselves?
I'm comfortable.
I'm comfortable.
Okay, everyone is good. Mr. LaBrusse, would you like to speak to the commission at this time?
Just briefly, Mr. Chairman. To, first off, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Richardson LaBrusse. I'm an attorney with Finger Melnick, Brooks &amp; LaBrusse, over here on Hilton Head, and we are representing Seapines Country Club in this rezoning application. I first want to extend my thanks to Missy and everyone at the Town of Hilton Head Town Staff who has assisted us with this application and this process in getting it to this point. The country club is in agreement with the staff report prepared and presented to you all today, including the conditions that are recommended for the approval. We are willing to accept those and believe that they are appropriate. I have Robbie Ames, who is the general manager of Seapines Country Club, here today. He is available on the phone if you have any questions in particular about this application. But again, it's relatively small and, in our opinion, relatively straightforward in respect to the criteria. It meets the criteria under the town's LMO. The project, again, for the benefit of the record and for any members of the public who haven't had an opportunity to review your full staff report, is really needed, this is really needed to modernize the facilities of Seapines Country Club, in particular, the practice facility and the driving range. So the driving range is currently, I believe, limited to 250 feet. If any of you all happened to be at Harbor Town last weekend, you could see what the increased length and drives have caused on driving ranges with the two cranes holding up that giant net to try to accommodate people who are driving the ball so much further and so much longer. This proposed rezoning is going to take that green waste site from the back of the driving range, move it to the northwest on this residential lot that Seapines Country Club owns, and extend that netting and all of that out, and also be able to accommodate, as part of this renovation, some additional changes to the driving range and the practice facilities. Again, this is in accordance with the town's LMO. It meets the criteria, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. LaBrusse. Teresa, why don't we go through the order of commissioners, and if the commissioners have a question or a comment, please provide it at that time.
Mr. O'Neil?
Questions?
Mr. Campbell?
No questions this time.
Mr. Perry?
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Stevens?
No questions at the time. Thank you.
Mr. Christian?
Mr. LaBrusse, that is presently a residential lot. I'm assuming it has a density unit assigned to it, and this is what I would think is a downzoning to the use. Will you lose that density unit on that piece of property, or is that something that's recoverable, or are you looking to assign somewhere else?
Mr. Chairman, when Seapines Country Club bought the lot from Seapines Resort, Seapines Resort reserved the density unit, as Seapines Country Club knew the intended use was always to convert it to this golf course. So there's never been an intent to have it be used for residential purposes.
Thank you for that. Rather than go through the roll again, do any of the commissioners have another question before we ask for a motion on this particular item? All right, seeing no hands, is there a motion to approve this particular request and forward it with the staff recommendations?
Moved.
All right, Alan, is there a second? Mark, second. Any further discussion on this item? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Raise your hand. Aye? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Your recommendation moves forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the Planning Commission.
Thank you for your report and your presentation. All right, commission business. I don't think Ann is on, and maybe Teresa has some insight. Any determination or soothsayer report about when we may be going back to shaking hands again in some manner, shape, or form, Ann?
I'll leave that to Jennifer Rae. She may have more insight than I do on this.
I don't know. We have not been given that directive at this point. I would be surprised if it's not coming in the near future, as more and more people are vaccinated and other government buildings are being opened. But at this point, we have not been given that direction. Town Council will be the first group to go back to face-to-face meetings, but that's not, I have not been told that date yet, so as soon as we know, we'll share it with you all.
You know, this is extremely convenient from a transportation standpoint, Jennifer, but there's something about, you know, seeing everyone in person and, you know, watching their body language that you can never duplicate online. And, you know, depending upon, you know, how many people have been vaccinated and doing a hybrid model could be also a choice. But, you know, I think we're all anxious at some point to get back to face-to-face meetings as long as that's safe for the commissioners and the general public who would be attending in person.
Agreed.
Okay, well, we thank you for listening to my rant. I always ask, Michael, if he has anything on a comp plan. I know his answer is going to be no.
We have, Mr. Chairman, we have an award-winning comp plan that is now completed.
Thank you for that, Michael. Levon, anything more on the Gulligici task force?
No, I think that where we are now, you guys heard the update, so again, we're all anxious to have some movement. Appreciate the support of the commissioners and of the Town Council.
We appreciate your work, Levon. I know that Leslie is not here, but do any members that are on the LMO committee have a comment at this time?
Nothing bad. We're progressing.
Okay, thank you. Alan, I don't believe you've met.
No.
I don't believe you have anything to report. And Ann, are you going to give the staff report?
Yes, sir. We do have an application for your next meeting on May 5th, a street name application.
Thank you for that. Is there any other business to come before the commission? Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion that we adjourn? Levon? Michael?
I moved it, Levon. Play us out of this with the...
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.